For legal advice. All right, now we're good to go. Roll call, please.
Mayor Deasy.
Here.
Vice Mayor Swede.
Here.
Councilmember Aslan.
Here.
Councilmember House.
Here.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Here.
Councilmember Salas.
Preston.
Councilmember Shimonie.
Here.
Councilmember Salas, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And the mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all. Councilmember Aslan, our landing acknowledgement, please.
The City of Flagstaff, the Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations, who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you. And brings us to agenda item four, public participation. We do have two cards, as well as two people online, and we will start with Trace Ward.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the council, Trace Ward, CBB Director. Can you hear me okay?
You can. Please proceed.
Thank you. Well, I wanted to just bring a little bit of sunshine to your meeting, to start your meeting today. The Discover Flagstaff, as well as the City of Flagstaff, has received an award, I'm holding it up here, its best weekend getaway to a sustainably conscious destination. The award was given to us by Green Living Magazine, and the event was on Friday, it was well attended, by the likes of folks like Mayor Gallego in Phoenix, it was down in the valley, and she personally told me that she loves coming to Flagstaff, her and her family, and so I just wanted to present this to you, let you know that folks in our number one market are paying attention to our efforts to be a sustainable destination. We have lots of love and lots of fans down in Phoenix and in the valley in general, who support our businesses and support our families and residents who work for those businesses. So that's it, I just wanted to share a little sunshine.
Thank you, Trace, that's awesome, and appreciate the team for all of your work and really supporting our ecotourism here in Flagstaff, that's really great.
Thank you.
All right, with that, next speaker is Kate Wyatt.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, City Manager Clifton, and staff. My name is Kate Wyatt, and I'm the Director of Human Trafficking Services with Northland Family Help Center. I started the Flagstaff Initiative Against Trafficking in 2017, and ever since our very first meeting, I have been overwhelmed by the support and compassion that our community has for raising awareness and providing survivors services to survivors of exploitation. Some of our most dedicated partners have been city personnel and programs. City council members and the Flagstaff Police Department are two that stand out. Throughout our existence, FPD has had consistent participation in fiat meetings and has represented on our various subcommittees. Over the years, I have been invited and warmly welcomed to provide in-service trainings and information related to human trafficking for patrol staff, and detectives oftentimes reach out for support and inquiries when they recognize signs of exploitation. We are so grateful for these strong relationships and appreciate the time and dedication to our anti-trafficking efforts. In the past few months, I have been meeting with state and national leaders in the anti-trafficking movement, who have shared best practices and training recommendations that will improve our community's response to exploitation. As such, I hope to collaborate on ordinances that will keep a victim-centered and trauma-informed approach and address the issue of demand for sex buying in our town. I am grateful for the many members of council who took the time to meet with us over the last month, and look forward to meeting with City Manager Clifton tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. All right, and then a couple online, Stacy, if you want to link him in.
Yes, Mayor, our first commenter is Heather Marcy. Heather, you can go ahead and unmute and turn your camera on.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, City Manager, and staff. My name is Heather Marcy, and I'm speaking on behalf of Northland Family Help Center. We house the Flagstaff Initiative Against Trafficking, also known as Fiat. I want to give comment and provide updates on our work with the city as it relates to strengthening anti-trafficking efforts. I do want to acknowledge that the timing of this statement was delayed due to council being on break, and then some out-of-office time on our end as well. I'm happy to share, we've had some great conversations over the past couple of months to discuss options for what that citywide response can look like. Northland has a great working relationship with FPD. Their officers and team provide us with a lot of help, whether we're calling 911, being in need of emergency response, or asking for data for grants, they are always very supportive. So I have spoken with Chief Musselman several times to share ideas, and we've had some great dialogue around this. I think part of the messaging today is that anti-trafficking efforts require a multi-system response. FPD can't end trafficking by themselves, and neither can Fiat. And so over the past couple of months, Kate and myself have been meeting with national and state partners in the field to identify best practices, trainings, ordinances, and resources. So we've had some initial meetings with the mayor, members of council, and we're meeting with the City Manager tomorrow. What we're bringing to the table in terms of ordinances and the C-City training are what other areas are doing, and so we know that might not be the best fit for our area, but that said, it's a starting point, and our main goal is to ensure that we are continuing this conversation with key stakeholders to figure out what our local anti-trafficking response will be, and so we look forward to working collaboratively with you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather.
And Mayor, I do have one more other public commenter, Stacy Sutherland, you can go ahead and unmute and give your comments now.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, City Manager Clifton, and staff. My name is Stacy Sutherland, I work for the Arizona Anti-Trafficking Network, and I am the Program Director of our trust program, which is Training Resources United to Stop Trafficking. I helped get Fiat started off the ground in 2017, and I am a subject matter expert on the topic of human trafficking for the state of Arizona. We are the nonprofit that does house the C-City's initiative program, and I have been working with Fiat over the last few months about strengthening the ordinances in Flagstaff. I do want to remind council and the citizens that human trafficking does happen in your community. We know, statistically speaking, based off studies done locally and nationally, that one in 20 men in Arizona buy sex, that's roughly 5% of our population. The City of Flagstaff is not immune to that, we do have buyers in the community that perpetuate this crime of our most vulnerable, and we do know that we have victims within our community. I have been tracking ads in Flagstaff with potential victims, and there is a variety of sites where we see victims being or placing ads on, and then there's also several sites where we see community members who live in Flagstaff who rate the victims that they buy, and so we want to offer our support to the city and help in any way we can, the C-City's initiative is completely free, and I have sent the entire council a letter, and I would appreciate it if you would review that, and we're willing to work with you to make the community more aware of human trafficking and get victims the resources that they need. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Stacy.
Mayor, that was my last public commenter.
Thank you. That does bring us down to Agenda Item Five, Review of Draft Agenda for the September 20th, 2022 council meeting. Council, do we have any questions or concerns for next week? All right. With that, we are down to Agenda Item Number Six, Hispanic Heritage Month, and I do believe we have one of our commissioners from the Commission on Diversity Awareness here with us today to get this, and then we'll have the Adult Education and Literacy as well. The City of Flagstaff celebrates the rich cultural traditions and proud ancestry of Hispanic Americans, and recognizes the vital contributions Hispanic peoples have made to strengthen and diversify our community. Hispanic families have resided in Flagstaff and have built communities in Calaveras, La Plaza Nueva, La Plaza Vieja, Los Chantés, and other areas of Flagstaff beginning in the 1920s. Hispanic Americans have influenced Flagstaff and continue to play an integral role in shaping, developing, and creating a vibrant city through service in city and county government, both elected and appointed, through leadership and service in education, business, medicine, and social services, through military service and veterans organizations, and through nonprofit organizations such as Nuestras, Reyes, and Ballet Folclorico de Colores. Hispanic Americans in Flagstaff have shared rich cultural traditions with the community through celebration of arts, language, and culture, such as Cinco de Mayo Celebration, Summertime Tardeada, and in partnership with the Museum of Northern Arizona, the Celebraciones de la Gente, and in murals and other public art in Flagstaff. In keeping with the National 2022 Hispanic Heritage Month observance theme, as announced by the National Council of Hispanic Employment Program Managers, Unidos, inclusivity for a stronger nation, reminding our community that we are enriched and strengthened through the web of connection born of respect for diversity and equity. Therefore, Commission on Diversity Awareness, in partnership with Coquigny County Hispanic Advisory Council, recommends the designation of September 15th, 2022 through October 15th, 2022, as Hispanic Heritage Month in unison with national and statewide observances. Therefore, I, Paul Deasy, Mayor of the City of Flagstaff, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2022, as Hispanic Heritage Month.
Thank you, Mayor Deasy, I really appreciate that. This is definitely a really important one to me, because this is my heritage, and being able to be a part of this and have my children see it is also something that I am very excited about, as we like to celebrate our culture, and knowing that we have a designated month for us to do so and for it to be recognized is really meaningful for us, so thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
We also have a proclamation for Adult Education and Literacy Week. Yeah, come on up. Nice to see you again. Center stage, with the cool kids. More than 51.4 million Americans can't read or write at the most basic level, while 75.1 million lack basic math skills, as well as the credentials and skills necessary to succeed in post-secondary education. Every year, one in three young adults drops out of high school. American Action Forum estimates that by 2020, America will be short in estimated seven-and-a-half million private sector workers across all skill levels. Adult education programs contribute to solving these challenges by helping Americans move along the continuum in their educational journey, to achieve basic skills and get prepared for career and college. Adult education programs in community colleges and community centers offer low-cost, high-value programs that upgrade the skill set of our citizens. And the City of Flagstaff celebrates Adult Education and Literacy Week as a proud participant in the National Educate and Elevate Campaign, which helps our citizens learn about all of their adult education options to attain their professional and personal goals. Now therefore, I, Paul Deasy, Mayor of the City of Flagstaff, do hereby proclaim September 19th through 25th as Adult Education and Literacy Week.
My name's Donovan Weedman, I'm the Senior Program Manager for Adult Education, and this is Debbie Goldstein, she's our ESL Lead Instructor, and Julie Baumgartner, our GED and HSE Lead Instructor, and I'd like to send my regrets from Sarah Hakiki, who was on the agenda to receive the award, she unfortunately got in a car accident last night, and we just found out this morning, so she sends her regrets, but she's just fine. Her car's not so fine, but she's fine. Yeah. We would like to thank you for the award, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. If we drill down and we look at Coquigny County, we see that we have approximately 10,000, which is almost 10%, I believe, the population, 10,000 students who do not have a high school equivalency, and we have approximately 2,000 individuals who lived in what we call linguistically isolated households, so that's about 12,000 individuals that are in need of our services. These individuals, as you know, are likely some of the ones who are most hardest hit, and they're the most during the pandemic and the most vulnerable of our population, so it's very important. We'd like to thank you for your support and your advocacy, and we can use that to help us reach further out into the county.
All right, we're down to Agenda Item Eight, the City Manager Report. Clifton, take us away.
Thank you, Mayor, council, good afternoon. This report is a brief one, I'll touch on a few things that are in the report, and would invite you to give that a read, it's just a few pages, and then appended to this report, we have the monthly updates from both Water Services and Community Development, and we'll have representatives from those divisions give you a high-level narrative of those updates in just a minute. In my report, I highlight a few things from our Police Department. Shannon and I attended the very small but meaningful retirement get-together for John Marsiniak, who's been our Animal Control Officer for a long time, in dog years, 266 years. So he is moving on to a well-deserved retirement, we are grateful, and that was a nice event. I'd also like to single out an award by Officer Stewart, who received a Flagstaff Police Department Life Saving Medal. He responded to a call where an individual was reported to have overdosed, and in an effort to locate the individual, he had to use his police vehicle to assist him in climbing a fence, where he ultimately found the person in need, was able to administer the necessary Narcan, and brought the individual back. We are grateful for his life-saving events, thank you, Officer Stewart. I want to mention this and then turn to my colleague here, Sterling, our City Attorney, and let him elaborate, but we have a little blurb in the report about Colleen Calhoun, who received an award recently.
Thank you. Colleen is, excuse me, Mayor and Council, Colleen is a legal specialist over in our City Prosecutor's Office, she does wonderful work, she's been with us for several years, almost six years now, I believe, how long is the?
I just have her, what's notable here is her receipt of the 2022 Administrative Professional of the Year, and I thought it would be good to hear from you, Sterling, in terms of congratulating her.
Absolutely, and with her receipt of that award, there were many candidates who were nominated to receive this, and she rose above all the rest, and was able to receive that award because of the tremendous amount of service she puts forward in her work there in the City Prosecutor's Office. We have some great staff over there who continue to support our attorneys, support staff there is key, there's one support staff member for each of the five attorneys, and she plays a very key role as a legal specialist and completely deserved the award, want to congratulate her for that.
Yeah, we all congratulate her, thank you, Sterling, for that nice comment, very, very happy for her, and we all extend our congratulations to Colleen. Our Fire Department, a few updates there of interest, but what I'd like to single out for you that I found of particular interest are a couple of photographs in your report, I'm just going to have to describe them to you rather than show them, but it's a before-and-after shot of the forest thinning management that has been occurring out near Fort Tuthill, very noticeable difference before the thinning operations and after, I'll give that a looky-loo, if you will, it's pretty enlightening as to what's going on out there in our forest resources and all the good stewardship that's underway. In Public Works, a couple of congratulations to new employees, Terrell Bagley, and also John Bliss, welcome to the team. I would like to make mention of the, let's see, the Signals and the Streetlight Team making, oh yes, this is what I wanted to call out, weeks ago, we were receiving, fielding a lot of concerns, complaints about the wayside horn and the lack thereof over at Fanning and on the east side of town. We had a lightning strike hit the infrastructure there, and it took out electric stuff, circuit boards, what have you, and the wayside train horns went down, and because of that, we had actual train-activated horns, which are very loud, and that was the case for a few weeks. We've got those replaced, I want to thank the folks in our City Engineering Team, and the thanks, thanks to the Signals and Streetlight Team with Public Works for getting on that, the phone calls have stopped, sometimes no news is good news, but I will tell you, being a resident on the east side, it is discernibly more quiet, and we are all appreciative of that, so thank you. I think with that, I will pass it on, one quick blurb, I want to thank all of you who attended, either in presence or by virtual attendance, the meet and greet that we had for the City Engineer position last Friday, that was very good, we appreciate the attendance, we appreciate the feedback, stay tuned on the outcome of that. We are underway with the Water Services Director and starting progress on a couple of other very important vacancies to fill, so a quick update on recruitment, which remains a very high priority topic for us, and with that, I think I will turn it over to Water Services to give you a nice summary of the monthly update that's attached to the report. Lisa, are you with us?
I am, I am here virtually. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, I'd just like to give you a quick update on what's going on in Water Services. The first thing I'd like to point out, or like to bring attention to, is a WOW Award that was received by our Water Reclamation Staff. Now, the Water Reclamation Staff services both plants, so they may be working at one or another plant intermittently, and when something has a problem, they all work together to solve that problem. Well, they had one of their critical components shafts break down, pumps have broken, and there was no redundancy, so they came up with an interim fix for it, and at the same time, they had a septage disposal that caused an upset in the plants. Now, these are biological processes that really have to stay balanced. This is amid a skeleton crew with COVID, and then we got a notice that there was a force majeure in one of our chemicals, so one of the primary chemicals that is used in the treatment, sodium bisulfate, well, they could not, we were not able to get them, even though we had the contract, so the team actually came up with a different process, they had to come up with a completely different process, found a supplier, never skipped a beat in this process, in the reclamation process. Most people don't even know how, what the challenges are when you're running the reclamation plants that are aging, and we are spending a lot more time on repairs and replacements of equipment, which you'll also be hearing about, but they, for that month, that it was like a constant challenge, they weathered through it, and they came through with shining colors, so we want to thank our team for a job well done. They do this kind of work every day, but when you have these challenges stacked, it's really worth mentioning, and to acknowledge the extra work that they all put into to keep us from averting any problems within that process. I'd like to move on to Water Commission, a Water Commission heard presentations in August on the stormwater rate adjustment, the Notice of Intent, and then we will be coming back to them actually on Thursday to talk about the actual rate notice, so we are moving forward with that. There's a great deal of outreach, public outreach, public notices, meetings, to talk about why the adjustments and how we came to those numbers. We also had a present, gave a presentation, our Water Production Manager, Brian Huntsinger, gave a production on fire and flood. It's the status of the interbasin pipeline, so we did get some drone footage, both our own and from the forest, the forest actually did take our staff up there to look at that interbasin pipeline coming down, and it's probably going to be due for a FEMA project. We're looking at that and how we can help accommodate that, and look at those damages. So we've already got people working, and firms looking at that assessment on what that's going to take to repair. Summertime is a very busy time for Water Services, especially in the Storm Water Department, when we've had rains, I don't have to tell you all about the floods and the flooding challenges that we've had, other than not just the stormwater staff, but distribution, collections, all of the staff has really jumped into to mitigate the floods, to keep them from happening, and to help residents in mitigating any damages that's happening with them. I know some staff were on that tour of the pipeline fire with Congressman Halloran when the road flooded, and they got a bird's eye view of that situation. We did put additional gauges in along our stormwater system, our IS people, and they're finding a new way in Francisure Palm, they have field cameras for live video footage, and using it more as a retention basin, so we're using all of the tools that we have available to us to support keeping people from being flooded and maximizing our system. Moving on to water production, well, they've done, they're doing the drone footage, and we're looking at what will need to be done in the interbasin. Lot of design work going on at the reclamation plants, you're hearing about this, we're living it and breathing it here in Water Services on plans to improve it, not kick the can down the road, but let's come up with some good solutions that are going to last for a while, and with an eye toward the future. So lots of design work for electrical rehab, maybe another digesters at the Rio Plant, and a wastewater master plant, I think the master planning efforts are undergoing right now, and they're also talking, we're also discussing the Naresco, the public-private partnership group that Sustainability has been working with on projects that would be suitable for wastewater and water to partner with them for our needs, for our capital needs. And proposals are underway, well, I think they've already selected a vendor for the new water, wastewater, and reclaim water rate study, so now we're moving through the stormwater, which has a little different process, we're starting the one for the water and wastewater rate study. So it's a busy month, you'll be hearing from us a lot in presentations, we're working in outreach in the bond, we're working in outreach in our rate adjustments, and we're working hard. We're working in outreach in our rate adjustments, and we're, we're working hard, and every staff member, we're very proud. Do I have any questions?
Any questions, Council? No, at this time, thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
And I'll note for Council, expect a lot more discussion on some of the things that Lisa talked about coming your way, notably on the retreat on the 29th of this month. We'll have a lot of follow-up on the infrastructure discussion that occurred one year ago, same time. A lot of that did concern Water Services and other things. You'll get updates on all of it, and maybe a quick update on the rate study as well. So, stay tuned on that. We also have, I don't know if you have read the document. I gave it a quick read, and I have to tell you, the graphics in the presentation are amazing. The Community Development Monthly Update has really upped its game. Community Development, not just a good read, but a very eye-catching read. And Dan, you want to walk us through that?
Yes, thank you, Greg. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members, Dan Folt, Community Development Director. And yes, we're very pleased to present you with this monthly report. It is a new format. I want to thank our administrative specialist, Tori Martin, who started with us back in June, I believe it was. She's responsible for our new look of our monthly report. Let me walk you through it. I'm going to share my screen here so that we can look at some things together. Were you all seeing the report?
Yes.
Yep.
Great. And so, we have tried to make an interactive report, and what I mean by that is we have a lot of live links in the report. And so, as you scroll through, you're going to find information here, our monthly construction statistics, the development status report, which is put together by our Planning Director, and current planning. The development status report is an extremely comprehensive report of everything that's in development review right now. So, things that are in concept plan, site plan, request to rezone property. It's a very comprehensive list, so I encourage everyone to look at that. We get requests for that one a lot. We've also got a link to our planning and zoning agendas. We've got an amendment coming up that's going to come to you in October. It's an amendment to our lighting standards, and this has been in the works for several years. Probably six years ago, the Naval Observatory conducted a light pollution study, and it came out with some specific recommendations as to what would have to happen with the degradation of the night sky in order for them to maintain their mission. And the follow-up to that was a joint land use study that was done between Coconino County and the City of Flagstaff. And so, we had some specific recommendations out of those, and that's what's led to this amendment. Our zoning code manager, Tiffany Antol, will be bringing this over the finish line. She's been working on it the last few months. We've got a link here to the draft ordinance, and the first public hearing on this will be in October, in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission on October 12th. And then it should be coming to Council probably later in October or early November. We've got an update here on a property care ordinance. We had a working group that met over the summer. We had six meetings. I've got a link here to a project webpage where we've got an explanation on what we've looked at at those meetings, what came out of those work sessions. We're going to have a work session with City Council on September 27th, so two weeks from today. Hey, we look forward to that. We've got an update on our regional plan update, so 2045 Regional Plan. We've entered into phase two of this multi-year project where we're looking at what is the vision for Flagstaff and how do we include that in our update to the regional plan. Sarah Decter and her team have been very busy attending a lot of community meetings, holding workshops on their own. We've got our schedule here. The next workshop is going to be September 17th, which is this Saturday, at Peace Lutheran Church. We've got a link right here to our regional plan page, so you can find out more about everything that's happening with the regional plan. We encourage folks to attend some of these meetings. Next, we've got an update from our housing section, some great general information. We've got a link to their August newsletter. I encourage everyone to go and read that newsletter. I don't have it in this specific part of the report, but our housing team, much like Water Services, is very busy right now with the bond question, putting the public information together. They're starting to schedule meetings out into the community to talk with folks about the bond questions and answer the questions about it. And so, that, I would say, is one of the top priorities right now for Sarah Dar and her team. We also had a community meeting last night over at the Murdoch Center. Thank you to everybody who attended. That was for our CDBG program, as well as getting input and information out about other services and other sections and divisions of the organization. Come down to our building safety. We've got a lot of information here that kind of compares permit activity and valuation. What you'll find is our permit activity is up from last year. Believe it or not, we're actually issuing more permits than we did a year ago, although the valuation is down. And I think what that speaks to is, we had some really large multifamily projects last year, and so it's not uncommon to see the valuation go up and down a little bit, but the permit activity is strong. That relates to plan reviews and inspections as well. So, we've given you a lot of numbers here on valuation. Again, this is kind of demonstrating what I just talked about. Valuation is down. Blue is this year. Orange is last year. However, overall permit activity is up. And I just want to take a moment here to pause on some of our plan review and inspection numbers. As many of you know, we are managing through a bit of a staffing crisis in our building safety program. This is certainly something we've had across the division and across the organization. Housing has been managing through a lot of vacancies. Planning and Development Services has. And right now, it feels like it's our building safeties time. At the beginning of August, we had three of seven building inspector positions vacant. We've been able to contract for a full-time position for six months for one of those. We've made a new hire for an inspector who's starting, I believe, next week, and so we're almost back to full staffing and inspections. We've got one more position to fill. I believe we have some applicants that we're going to be scheduling interviews with. And then in our plan review section, as of the end of today, we will have four vacancies out of four, so three plan review positions and a building permit tech. And so, what we've done to, you know, how are we going to continue with plan review when all four positions are vacant? We're going to rely very heavily on our third-party plan review, which we do year-round as it is. We do have a contract with Bureau Veritas. We send plans out to them. So, we're going to rely on our contract. We've got building inspectors who are qualified to do plan review, and a few have expressed an interest to do that outside of their normal 40 hours. We've hired a temporary position to help with the permit tech work, to work with some of the intake and get those plans through completeness and out to our contract reviewers. We've done an internal refresh, so we've got a person in Community Development, Tori Martin, who I mentioned previously, who's going to spend about half her time helping out upstairs in building safety, again, with some of the front-end work to get these permits out to our third-party reviewers. And then I mentioned, we're obviously actively recruiting for all these positions. As of this morning, our building official, Amy Hagan, has told me she's got three candidates that she's interested in interviewing. So, I think it's good news that we've got candidates. We've actually had some of these positions open for over a year in plan review, and so hopefully we'll get those filled, and we're going to soldier through these difficult times on the staffing. And then finally, we've got a code compliance report, and I'm getting these posted on the website. I know this is not as clear as some of the other sections in here, but I like, it really demonstrates the reins of issues that Reggie and his team work on. Some of the big activities in July, clearing of sidewalks, even though we don't have snow in the summer, they work very much on keeping sidewalks clear of overgrowth, weeds, and other things. Lot of activity on temporary signs. This is usually tied to an election, and so you'll see a lot of activity contacting folks about that. And then, as usual, a lot of activity with graffiti busters. Seventy-five individual cases in July were removed of graffiti. So, again, thank you again for this opportunity, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about Community Development.
Thank you, Dan. Council, do we have any questions? I will say, it was a very pretty, pretty report. I love the graphs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and thank you, Dan. I might add on to a couple of comments that you shared. You talked about how folks are busy with the getting out there in the community on the information related to the bond questions in November. On point with that, Shannon told me that she and much of the team who Dan described, housing, and certainly folks from Water Services, and many others presented to the Realtor Association this week. We will be in front of the Chamber, Chamber of Commerce on Thursday morning of this week. Looking forward to that. So, we are busy. This is the next chapter, you know, in, in that long process that started about a year ago with the initiation of the Citizen Bond Committee and several months' worth of hard work by that committee to come up with the proposed questions, which this council adopted, approved back in June before your recess. Since that time, all this information gathering has been happening, and it's been very good. Videos, you've had a couple of snippets of those, and a lot of information packets, posters, websites, what have you, all in the interest of transparency and information sharing with our citizenry as we come up to the important election time in November. So, that process will continue. It's a very important one for us, and I just wanted to give you an update on that. I think with that, I will conclude unless you have any questions of me.
Doesn't look like it. Thank you very much, City Manager.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we are down to Agenda Item 9, Lived Black Experience Update.
Good afternoon, Mayor Deasy, Vice Mayor Sweet, and Council members. My name is Kim Robinson. I am the Project Manager for the Live Black Experience Project, based here in Flagstaff. The Live Black Experience Project is an extension of the Southside Community Association. And our mission is to engage with law enforcement, local companies, local businesses, and organizations so that we can unearth the expertise and resources that are available, not only to Flagstaff's African-American populace, but those looking for roots. We're divided into seven communities, I'm sorry, seven committees, which each have a specific mission, such as addressing mental problems specific to the African-American populace, addressing issues about social justice and youth. We have many accomplishments. We've hosted two Entrepreneur Expos, open to our community to showcase Black-owned companies, and we also have hosted artisan workshops and fairs. We completed Year One of 66 Pathways to Juneteenth and Live Black Experience on Route 66, which are grant projects. We have presented 120 barbershop, barber shop talks via Facebook Live, and they're available on YouTube, and we tackle very difficult subjects, and we pull from community members to sit in on these dialogues. We also have kitchen table talks, which also address difficult issues. We hosted the Live Black Experience Health Symposium on June 3rd at NAU's High Country Conference Center. It was very well-attended. Thanks to the City of Flagstaff, we were able to start this project, but we are not only meeting Flagstaff's funding, we are exceeding it. The Bella Investment Group funded a housing program for $40,000. NAU contributed to our health program, $10,000. The Route 66 and Juneteenth Project was combined funding between grants in the city for $25,000. Flagstaff Beautification and Mural was $7,000, and a grant to finance two interns at $5,000. We are also continually bringing in income through speaking engagements, and as of now, we have brought in $400 through speaking engagements. Our upcoming events include a health fair hosted by the Live Black Experience Project on October 1st from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Historic Murdoch Community Center. We also have a Black Artisan Marketplace showcasing some of our local talent on October 1st from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., also at the Murdoch Center. We continue to push forward and lead Flagstaff towards understanding and inclusion through continually engaging in difficult conversations, steadily contributing to our local economy, and bolstering the diversity that has always made Flagstaff unique. Moving forward, the LBA Project likes to correct historical narratives and foster minority enterprises and be a substantial resource of positive program for the enhancement of our entire city. That's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Council, do we have any questions?
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you for all your work.
Bear with us.
Yeah, no problem. All right, we are down to Agenda Item 10, 2004 Neighborhood Open Space in Flagstaff Urban Trail System Land Acquisition Bond Priorities. Take us away.
Thank you, Your Honor, Members of the Council. My name is Martin Intz. I'm the city's multimodal transportation planner.
Good afternoon, Council. I'm Robert Wallace. I'm the open space specialist for the city.
And we are before you tonight to provide you with some information and ask for your discussion on an updated acquisition plan for neighborhood open space and foots, easements, and corridors to be purchased through the remaining funds with 2004 Neighborhood Open Space and Foots Land Acquisition Fund. And just to give you a little idea of what we're going to cover tonight, Robert will begin with a short outline of our process getting through this project, including some upcoming dates. I'll give you some information on the original Prop 302, which authorized that bond, including an accounting of the acquisitions that we've done with that money to date. We'll talk, both of us will present information on our updated plan for acquisition, and then we'll close out with next steps in this process, and then give you an opportunity to ask us questions and have discussion about the process.
Okay, to, to arrive at the point where we're here tonight, we completed an internal commission review of acquisition and priorities for moving forward. This presentation is to ensure that Council has the opportunity to review and discuss the priorities and that strategy that was come up with and developed. And the next steps will include the approval of the ordinance, granting acquisition authority, and repeal the previous ordinance. And then we'll also be working with our finance and real estate to pursue acquisitions. And then we'll also be working with our finance and real estate to pursue acquisitions. Today, we're here to receive Counsel's review and discussion, and if you approve, we shall return on September 20th, next week, with the first ordinance read, and then the second read in October, on October 4.
If we could pause for just a few moments.
Stacey broke it.
All right, to go back to the beginning, Proposition 302 was approved by Flagstaff voters in 2004, and it was titled "The Neighborhood Open Space and Foots Land Acquisition Bond." It provided a total of $7.6 million for acquisition of real property, as well as easements to support the Foots Trail and completion of that system. As you know, any acquisition of property rights, including real property or easements, requires authorization from the council. So back in 2009, the council approved Ordinance 200941, which gave staff authorization to pursue acquisitions using that bond funds. And at that time, the targets were 18 open space parcels that had been identified and reviewed and prioritized by the Open Spaces Commission, as well as any of the corridors or easements needed to complete the Foots according to the Foots Master Plan. Over the years, we acquired a number of corridors and easements for Foots Trails. They're all listed here on the screen. Some of the list includes some trails that have become quite popular and were very important and significant for us to complete.
Yeah, and for open space thus far, we have used the 2004 bond funds to acquire in part the Observatory Mesa Natural Area in 2013 by coupling the 2004 bond funds with an Observatory Mesa bond and a State Park grant. And then Picture Canyon was also acquired in part with the 2004 bond funds and paired with another State Park grant. And then Thorpe Park West and the hillside between Route 66 and Cherry Hill was also acquired. Here's a depiction of the progress for open space. Looking at this map from left to right, we have Observatory Mesa, which is made up of the four large checkerboards there in blue, with that small projection on the easternmost parcel being the Thorpe Park West, which supports access to the natural area on the east side of the preserve and abuts the Thorpe Park area. There in the middle, just to the east of downtown, is the hillside between Route 66 and Cherry Hill. And then, of course, Picture Canyon on the east side of Flagstaff, situated on old Route 66 behind the mall.
So at this time, there's a little bit more than $2 million left in this fund, and because 2009 was a few years ago, we felt it was important to update the acquisition plan in an attempt to spend down that last $2 million and close it out. So our plan for acquisition includes three main categories. They are shown here on the slide. The first is, as with the original, Foots Corridors, and these are corridors that are identified as priorities in the next 20 years. So we have funding identified for them mainly through Proposition 419. So not the full list of Foots Trails planned out into the future, but the ones that we have funding for over the next 20 years. The second category is easements for other trail-related, trail facilities and related facilities, and that includes single-track access trails, trailheads, and forest access points. And the third category is larger open space tracks that have been reviewed and prioritized recently by the Open Spaces Commission. And I just want to go back for a second to that second category and give you a better description of single-track access trails. These are single-track trails that connect with the foot system on the interior of the city with regional recreational trails around its perimeter, including in the National Forest. In a lot of cases where we have identified single-track access trails, there is already a Foots Trail planned for the long term, but single-track trails are significantly much less complicated and less expensive to build than Foots Trails, and ultimately less expensive to maintain as well. And so we think we can build them in the short term and have that function served well, as a single-track trail, well before we can build a Foots Trail. And in some cases, it may work out, because I think the function works out well, that these may be the long-term solution as well, and we never have to build a Foots Trail in those locations.
Real quick, Counsel Member Aslan.
Yeah, I'm sorry if you just stated this and I missed it. Can you define "single-track" a little bit more? Do you have a picture of something like that? I think I know what it is, but I don't want to assume, and for the public as well.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, Counsel Member Aslan. Foots Trails are built to a 10-foot width. They're typically either paved in concrete, or they have an aggregate surface, but they're a very well-developed surface. It takes a fair amount of construction to get to that point. A single-track trail, by contrast, is two or three feet wide. They typically involve no imported material like aggregate. They typically just scrape down to mineral soil. And depending on how they're built, they may have obstructions in the trail, like rocks or roots or drainages. Some can be built with very few of those features, some can leave a lot of it in. It kind of depends on what your intent is.
I'm guessing your typical single-track trail is not Americans with Disabilities Act compliant or even appropriate for many electric, heavier electric bikes, depending on the tread?
Depending on the tread, yes. Forest has a categorization of single-track trails, and I forget if it goes from 1 to 4, and if that's most remote to most developed. But depending on how it's built, some can, while not technically meeting the requirements of ADA, can be generally accessible even to people who use wheelchairs. But then if they're more rough, if they involve more rocks and grades, then no, they really wouldn't be accessible, and they'd be difficult to use for people with any limitations.
And these are different, then, not to be confused with social trails and just totally undeveloped forest passage?
Your Honor, Counsel Member, yes. These would be managed and maintained as part of the system. And I'll go back just to follow up on your questions. The use that it serves is important as well, and these have been identified as a connection between the foot system and recreational trails. So typically, people who would be using them are going off to the forest to have a recreational experience, either by bike or on foot. I think if we identified them as serving a transportation function in the city, we would be more likely to insist that they be built to a foot standard, because I think the foot standard better supports commuting and getting around. But since they're sort of for transportation, in that people are getting themselves out to the forest, but they're really for recreation, because that's how people are using them, I think that they work well in that regard.
Thank you for that additional clarification. It's actually really helpful.
So we have a map. This represents all of the Foots Trails and the single-track and other trails that I mentioned. These are all shown in red. They represent what we've identified as first priority, meaning that we have funding identified for them in the next 20 years, again, using Prop 419. This gives you our acquisitions kind of in a bigger context. This is context, this is all of the Foots Trails that we have planned on the Foots Master Plan. What's shown in red is the first priority, so they correspond to that first map. Orange is our second priority, and blue is the third priority. And again, these are beyond 20 years in that we don't have funding identified for them. This table is a summation of that first map. So it shows in the first column the name of the project. The second column is a count of the number of unique parcels that are involved. The third column shows what type of facility the acquisition would support, so typically a Foots Trail or a single-track trail. There's also one forest access point and one trailhead. Fourth column is acreage, and the fifth column is estimated cost. And I think it's important here to clarify that the estimated cost is kind of a planning level estimate. It is not an appraisal. It is not what we would offer. It's just, we use it to help identify how much we have available in funds and how much these things will cost. Our general estimate, you can see at the bottom, is $1.9 million for all those acquisitions.
And there are seven potential areas identified by the Open Spaces Commission that would help support the Open Spaces Commission's strategic plan. These seven were included along with the Foots Priority, Foots Priorities to help spend down the remaining funds more quickly. Part of the funds would be reserved for Foots, while a portion would be allocated towards these open space priorities. In addition, we also will be applying for grant funds to help support an open space acquisition. These seven areas were reviewed and ranked by the Open Spaces Commission, with the Hoffman Tank Parcel Area recommended as the first priority. Special Care, which was kind of taken to ensure that the selections by the commission supported both the Foots Trails and the open space in tandem. Here you can see a supporting map for the area. These seven mutually supportive properties are shown here on this map, ranked from 1 to 3 in priority. The first priority is the area in red, the Hoffman Tank area, and would support the open space system by protecting a small portion of land along the John Wasey Powell Development Corridor that would otherwise have no protection. The second priorities that you see on the map here are in yellow. The locations are, one, which is by the Continental Park area, and would provide the opportunity to work in tandem with Foots and parks to better access and opportunities for this location. And while the location north of the Fort Tutt Hill would provide greenway buffer along the Foots Trail there. And then the third priority indicated in blue has three different locations, one north of the Fort Tutt Hill area, which would support green space along the Foots in partnership with the hospital plans, one south of the Fox Glen area, and the remaining one there on the east side of Picture Canyon that would provide connectivity to the Picture Canyon Preserve for a Townsend-Winona access point. In summary, this map shows parcels that may be acquired. If the top priority is not possible, we'll move to the second priority, and so on. For properties that are not acquired, the backup plan would be to acquire an easement for the Foots Trail connectors. So these trail connectors would be secured regarding the acquisition of the entire property. The main difference really being that an easement for a trail corridor would be much more narrow than an open space buffer preserved as a greenway along the trail system. And the chart that you see here is similar to the one that Martin showed you earlier. The table shows those seven areas outlined that the Open Spaces Commission identified as priorities, with the top priority having a cost estimate at this time. The Hoffman Tank area, which is the primary priority, protects a small portion of land right along the John Wasey Powell Development Corridor, as I mentioned. It also connects the Bow and Arrow and Rio de Flag Greenways to the National Forest Service, which is a real popular location. It maintains an important wildlife corridor that was identified by the Arizona Game and Fish Department. It also provides buffer along the Arizona National Scenic Trail, and it supports non-motorized transportation, recreation, and access to both open space and forest. And I think would add a lot of character and attraction to Flagstaff.
So our next steps, as we mentioned tonight, is your opportunity to ask us questions and have discussion about our updated plan.
Martin, if you could hold again.
Hold. I don't know. Ta-da. There we go.
All right, I may not be alone in this, but I think that noise that teams make when you have an incoming call will haunt me for the remainder of my life. Anyway, so tonight is your opportunity for a question and more in-depth discussion. We have prepared an ordinance authorizing acquisition, which we will present to you at your meeting next week. And assuming that the first read is done, we will be back on October 4 for the second read of that ordinance. So that is the conclusion of our presentation. We are happy to answer any questions you may have or to just listen to your discussion.
Thank you. Turning it back to Counsel here, Counsel Member Solis. Jeez, Stacey. Might be the storm right now. Oh, bugger's. CJ with the magic touch.
Test, test, test.
Echo Niner to Fox 3, do you copy?
Can you all hear us? If you can, please let us know in the chat.
They are saying it works.
Copy that, roger that.
Roger, roger. All right, Counsel Member Solis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Martin and Robert, for this very informative presentation. So you have, you're bringing forward a map of the priorities of acquisition. How does that map overlays? I remember this time last year, we have a similar presentation about the regional trail plan, but it was more like a regional perspective, and if you layer it, because I remember if completed, that project is like 300 million south. So if you layer this proposal with the seven priorities, how does it look in the bigger picture of the regional trail plan? Map.
Your Honor, Counsel Member Solis, for the most part, FTI planned on trails that were outside of the city, so they left planning for the foot system to the city. Where we do overlap is on the points of connectivity between our foot system or really the city of Flagstaff and everything around it, including the National Forest and other regional open space. So we've been working with FTI, Flagstaff Trails Initiative, and the Forest Service to make sure that we are coordinated in terms of where we have points of connectivity. And so if you look at some of the trails that are planned on FTI, or as a follow-up to that, the Forest Service has now released the plan for the Mount Eldon Dry Lakes area. And there's coordination between where our trails connect at the northern boundary of the city and where their trails are planned at the southern boundary of their planning area.
So, okay, so in terms of jurisdictional authorities, so Foots is owned and managed by the city, and then multiple partners when it comes to Forest County and even Arizona Trail. Because I remember there's this connectivity from, let's say, on the west side, from Rogers Lake Natural Area all the way to the development, Timber Sky.
Yes. Yes, so we've done our best to coordinate where those trails connect, and that includes trailheads as well, where we have, give people points of access. And that includes trailheads as well, where we have, give people points of access. And we have, trailheads have been planned, so they're kind of on the perimeter. So inwardly, they serve the foot system. Going outward, they serve the Forest Service or the county system. And that's a good opportunity to kind of highlight both systems and that connectivity between them. Of course, our preference is that everyone begins their hike or their bike ride from their house. And so we want to make as robust a system of trails within the community so people are able to do that and give them access to open space.
Thank you so much. As we move forward acquiring this open spaces, I believe it will also add, we also have to add capacity in terms of maintenance, inventiveness of trails and open space. So just keep that in mind, Mr. City Manager and Mr. Wallace and Mr. Enes, as we move forward in terms of budget requests for staff and personnel. Thank you.
Councilmember Shimonie.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Martin and Robert, for your presentation and your work on this. I don't really have too many questions except for one, really, and I support the general plan and direction and the priorities that you've outlined. Curious to see what other members of council have to say, but my only question is, through a lens of equity, are there any other projects that maybe rise to a higher priority that haven't been outlined or identified?
Thank you for the question, councilmember. We did conduct an access analysis for open space a couple of years ago, and we have identified that there are some locations in Flagstaff that don't have very close access, primarily south of I-40 in the southeastern quadrant of Flagstaff. So this does address some of those, but certainly not all of those. And we are coming up with other solutions as we move forward for trying to address that as well.
Okay. And one more thing to add, and I see Martin's gearing up, ready to jump in, but Martin, maybe you can speak to this, too. The foots trail that isn't officially a foots trail that leads between, I think, the library on the east side to Bushmaster, is that one that could be potentially explored?
Your Honor, Councilmember Shimonie, yes, I'm familiar with that. We have explored the property rights. My recollection is that that trail would be, the property rights would be difficult, but candidly, I do not remember the reason why. It may be the case, well, I'll have to look at it again, but it may be the case that it appears to be an alley or utility corridor, but it may be that it is divided up into individual parcels, which would make acquisition difficult because there would be a lot of property owners to negotiate with. But I can look at that again. I know it's come up before. I think people actually use it as a connection. We looked into the property rights and I just don't recall at this point what the situation is.
Okay. Thank you for that. And yeah, it's a great direct path between the library and Bushmaster. And I think a lot of kids and people in the neighborhood use it on the east side. But yeah, anyways, thank you, and I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Martin. I'm overall very supportive of the plan presented. I just have one little nitpicky thing I want to bring up. In the staff report, it says the Flagstaff Urban Trail System is a citywide network of non-motorized pathways. That's actually not a true statement because on all of our foots trails, except two, electric motorbikes are allowed. So I just thought I'd point that out.
Thank you, councilmember. I do have a question on this. I'm, you know, with the two mil we have right now, I'm looking at the first priority of the foots, all of them totaling about 1.9 million, and then the acquisition of the Hoffman Tank at 958,000. So how much over 2 million do we have? Because that adds up for quite a bit larger than 2 mil.
Yes, Your Honor, it approaches $3 million, actually. I think we had the 1.9 and then the 985,000 between the two. I think the answer, there's a couple of parts to my answer. One is that we use planning level cost estimates to see how far we could get with the money we have available. When I look at some of the parcels, I think that we may have a better-than-average chance of getting them for no cost, like the developers would be willing, or the property owners would be willing to give them to us at no cost. And there were one or two that I think fall into that category that we estimated would have cost us otherwise, like 150 or 200,000 dollars. I think some trails we might run into some headwinds as we begin to negotiate with property owners. At that point, we'll have to decide if we move on to other trails as a priority and, you know, with the idea of coming back to that at some point when it may be easier to negotiate or to acquire them. So I think some things may happen that will whittle down the list from 1.9 million dollars. It is likely that when we get toward the end, we may have to make some decisions about, you know, kind of sharpen our pencils about what our priorities are with the money we have left. I will say, even after the bond has been spent down and we have no more money available for these acquisitions, we will go back to our old method of building foots trails in which we planned money for acquisition as part of the project. So it doesn't mean that foots trails stop developing. It just means that we have to include money out of the project cost in the future for any acquisition that we need.
Gotcha. That makes sense. Thank you for the explanation. And I do support this. I think the Hoffman Tank is an area we really do need to be proactively receiving as a wildlife corridor or purchasing, as well as a lot of these little sections make, I'm excited about seeing these connections happen. So anyways, anyone else on council? Yeah, Councilmember Solis.
Yeah, I think it's also kind of, it's a great opportunity for the city to deleverage our existing resources, 2 million, to seek state and federal grants to help us acquire these open spaces. Because it's spelled out in our state and federal legislative priorities, natural areas, open space and dark skies, trails in the dark skies. So leverage our existing funds and seek and obtain grants. Thank you.
Excellent. Aside from that, then, I'm looking forward to September 20th first read. Thank you, gentlemen. Oh, do we have a? Oh, for last, yeah. Excellent. Thank you. I was just making sure it wasn't for this item. With that, we are down to Agenda Item 11, our public participation. And Paul Arle?
Yeah, I was just trying to verify, did you receive my email? I sent it out earlier today, but also the pamphlet I left last week, to see if anyone had a chance to read over that. And did any, anything they need to answer or clarify what I sent? You could ask me any questions about that. And also, I was looking forward to, hoping to bring Dr. Windsor Nozzi and his family to Flagstaff. He has one granddaughter that is attending NAU, is a freshman. And I'm hoping that she'll be able to speak here at the town council from her point of view, being an Apache and her grandfather being Dr. Windsor Nozzi, senior of the Apache Stronghold, and others that may be wanting to speak, like concerned citizens and minors from my hometown of Superior, and give you guys a full perspective of what's at stake and ask them questions from their perspective. Dr. Windsor Nozzi, I'm trying to get him to speak at Twin Arrows, at, you know, places in town, Fire Creek, at NAU, probably in the springtime. They're booked for the fall, but Northern Arizona Cultural Center, we're hoping to have him there for a gathering. But just to bring more awareness and educate people in the Northland of what's going on to protect Sacred Old Flat in my hometown of Superior. And, you know, just to see, you know, what's really at stake, you know, make sure everyone truly understands what's truly at stake, you know, with the religious rights and, you know, the rights, protecting the rights of nature and water in the middle of the mega drought. This is really important. Like, I reached out to my congressmen and senators, and it's just like, it seemed like they're turning their backs on us sometimes. And as a veteran, you know, I still honor my oath, freedom of religion, freedom of speech, you know, it's very important to, you know, I still honor my oath to this constitution. And so it's like, these are, things are going to be going up to Supreme Court. It just got done at the Ninth District Court or Circuit Court in San Francisco over this religious freedom and hoping that they would get stopped there, but it's probably going to go to Supreme Court, and you know how things are there, but we're just looking for as much support from all cities in Arizona if possible. There's, they're getting a lot of support from around the world and around tribes, around this state and around the world. So it's a big deal, and I just want people in the Northland to be aware of that and see what we can do to support, you know, them in solidarity, as much as we did to have a Sioux Tribe five years ago. You know, we stopped the Canyon Mine for uranium. You know how that's poisoning the environment? So try to do the same.
Thank you, Paul. And if you would stay after till the end of the meeting, I'd like to chat with you for a minute, if you will.
All right.
Yeah, thank you. All right. That brings us down to Agenda Item 12, informational items, two from mayor, council, and city manager, and the future agenda item requests. With that, I will start with, let's go with Councilmember Solis, starting out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tomorrow, I'm, tomorrow till, tomorrow and Thursday, I will be attending the statewide rural transportation summit representing Metro Plan. And then Friday morning is I'll be attending the State Transportation Board also in Maricopa.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Russell?
Nothing.
McCarthy?
I just might mention that I went to a meeting here that was held by a state senator and a state representative on the subject of housing. And Ms. House was there, and several people that are running for city council were there. And the Chamber of Commerce was there, developers were there. And we had kind of a discussion from all viewpoints about housing issues. And I just might mention to Mr. Clifton that our city staff made very good presentations, and it was interesting discussion on housing, an important issue for the city. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Shimonie?
Thank you, Mayor. A few things. So this past week, yes, Councilmember McCarthy, that Housing Committee meeting was good, and I was also glad to be in there in person and be able to speak to the nuanced struggles with student-specific infill housing. I found that that was a point that I made that was very helpful to the conversation at large. But gratitude to the committee members for being here and for taking the time to listen to our community and think, a big, you know, shout out to all the committee partners and agencies who showed up and engaged in that discussion. And as Councilmember McCarthy said, staff did a great job presenting and sharing some really good insight. Yesterday, I got to do a ride-along, I think it was a four-hour ride-along with the care team, and it was incredible. It was absolutely amazing, and I highly recommend each one of us councilmembers electeds take the time to do that if you are able to. It's a great experience, and it's a great way to see firsthand what the care team is doing on the ground. I got to learn that, I think, they were dispatched about 150 times last month, which is incredible. And also that there are communities across the state who are reaching out to learn more about what we're doing in order to implement their own version of what we're doing. So we're already becoming the model across the state, which is just so exciting, right? Something to really be proud of. And lastly, on that topic, big shout out to our team with Flagstaff Fire and especially our chief, who helps to get Captain Feltz back in, involved with the care team and as a point person in communication. We'll talk more about that later, council, but things are happening, and they're happening in a really positive way. So a big shout out to Team Flag and the community with the care effort. Last thing in regards to this past week, I got to speak at a NAU accounting class yesterday about our budget, and I really tried to bring my A-game with a lot of good information and excitement, but I struggled to keep people excited about our budget. But I did my best, and it was a good conversation. But yeah, I felt a little deflated after it defeated. This week, a couple of things on the radar. This Wednesday, the CJCC Criminal Justice Coordinator Council meeting is occurring from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. And again, those are always open to the public. This Thursday, I'm meeting with members from the American Rehab Campus and the Native American Connections Group out of Phoenix, nonprofit, with our very own Rose Tohi. And we're building relationships between those two agencies in order for the ARC, Up Here and Flag, to have culturally sensitive and appropriate efforts, which is wonderful. Friday, CJ, our own CJ, puts on a ultimate frisbee game, 11:00 to noon. And I'm really making this statement just so, to excite people like Sterling to join us on the field and others who would like to join. But CJ does a great job, and it's a fun game that's open to people of all backgrounds. This Monday, the Coconio County Diversion Group that I'm a part of meets regularly on a monthly basis, and Monday is our meeting. And it's a wonderful group that coordinates all the different outreach, alternative approaches that we're doing. And then lastly, Monday from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., there is a library director candidate meet and greet here at City Hall from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. And I believe that's open to the public. So a lot going on and very exciting past week and next week. Good meeting, everybody, and have a great week. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Shimonie. Councilmember House?
Yeah, just briefly, I was able to attend, along with Vice Mayor Sweet, the City of Flagstaff Town Hall in conjunction with the League of Neighborhoods. That was a really good chance to get to see our city divisions in action and sharing a lot of great resources. I walked away personally with a lot of great water tools that I'm going to be putting into place in my little apartment and seeing what kind of difference that makes. But really exciting stuff and great tools for community members, and I hope folks find opportunities to engage with those different divisions in different ways. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember House. I'll just mention that the Peace Day celebration is this Saturday at the Peace Bowl in Heritage Square at 10 o'clock. Hold, hold. Yes, 10 o'clock. And picking in the pines is happening this weekend, so I am looking forward to it. Anyways, thank you all for good meeting and meeting adjourned.